I'd like to call the meeting to order and if we can have a moment of silence and remember all the people lost from the tornado. Please rise to the class floor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, the Herald News, the Suburban Trends, The Record, The Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney, Table Division of Warwick, and West Milford TV 77 and Post St. Louis Administration Building. Copies of the board meeting calendar, resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, Township Library, and all district schools. Roll call.
This is Romeo.
Here.
This is Stevenson.
Here.
Mr. Conklin.
Here.
Mrs. Sawyer.
Here.
Mr. Marino.
Here.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Here.
Ms. Chopchinsky.
Here.
Mr. Stillman.
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Here.
Good evening. Dr. Anamo.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our December meeting. This is also Mr. Fink's final meeting as part of our board. We will have some additional words later than you, so we're trying to get that out of the way now. But we'll start it off with our onsite decision day, last Thursday at the high school. Just to recap, this is an event we have for our seniors. It's put on by our Gias department. They work in conjunction with dozens of colleges, both in the state and in neighboring communities or neighboring states, a regional event, so to speak. Our students sign up for interviews with local colleges, Pennsylvania, New York, New Jersey, Delaware, Connecticut. The colleges send representatives to our high schools. Usually it's in the lower media centers. This year we had to spread it out to a couple of classrooms. But they meet with the students, they review their transcripts, grades, test scores, the whole package, and then they render a decision whether or not to admit them on the spot. So it started out very small in 2003, and it's grown every year. So some numbers we just got back yesterday. We had over forty percent of our high school seniors participate in onsite decision day. That's better than two out of five. We have over 201 acceptances. We have nineteen more who are waitlisted, who should find out very shortly. And we also had a couple of students out, otherwise that number would be much higher. We have, just had Seton Hall alone. We have seven admitted to Seton Hall, nine admitted to Rowan, twelve admitted to Stockton, seventeen admitted to Ralfo, seventeen admitted to William Patterson, twenty-five admitted to Montclair State, plus a lot of other schools with numbers very high as well. So we'll start to learn more and more about scholarships awarded. Not all the schools offer the scholarships at the same day. Some do. So some of those students we just mentioned were not just admitted to a college, they also received a scholarship offer from that college. Some of the other schools wait until the new year to offer the scholarship money. So it's a very successful event. Like I said, it's growing. It started out with probably ten percent of our students, and now we're over forty percent participating. So today we look forward to every year. Next up, we have to make a minor adjustment to the 2022-23 district calendar. We're going to align our November break with the NJEA convention, which will be November tenth to the eleventh. So right now our calendar says November third and fourth. We will adjust that tonight as the agenda motion. Once it's approved, we'll share with the school community for next year. And our student representatives, this way.
Hello, everyone. On November thirtieth, the high school held the West Milford Hometown Pride Night. We had a great turnout, and many students had great opportunities to meet with the coaches and advisors for anything they were interested in participating into their future high school career. The annual oral concert was held for the first time since the pandemic the other night, and it was amazing to see them get back on the stage. Our band is performing tonight, and there was so much excitement about that today in school. And it's also their first time since the pandemic, so that was really exciting for them. Our winter sports have been starting up the past couple of weeks. We are wishing them luck at the start of their season. Our hockey team has some big games coming up along with our boys and girls basketball team, boys and girls dancing team, and our wrestling team, who went to Rutgers to watch one of their matches last Friday. Our Special Olympics basketball team have their big skills event on December third. This was an amazing night. We were able to give our Highlander athletes many gold, silver, and bronze medals. We had over sixty volunteers from our high school alone who came out to help cheer on our athletes. We are also introducing a new sport to the high school. Unified basketball will be hosting their interest meeting next Tuesday. Unified sports joins people with and without intellectual disabilities on the same team. Our high school is so excited to be getting involved, as it is the perfect way to promote inclusion and diversity within the school. We are not only excited to watch them grow as a team, but we are also excited to see the difference it makes in the school, since it sends such a strong message. As everyone is getting ready for the holidays, we are too, the Student Council is hosting our annual Tour De Gris contest, which ends next week. The winner will receive money to our Highlander coach. We are also having our spirit week next week. Monday, we get to the holiday spirit and wear holiday hats and colors. Tuesday, there's an incoming Highlander blizzard, and everyone is wearing white. Wednesday, everyone is pulling out their ugliest holiday sweaters. And Thursday is the night for holiday break, where everyone is wearing their comfy clothes. Thank you so much for letting me speak today. I hope everyone has a safe and happy holiday.
Same to you. Thank you, Abigail. Mr. Novak?
In a moment, Dr. Matlos is going to share our Start Strong presentation. I spoke to the Ed Committee in last week's meeting about some of the things that we've been working on. I've mentioned it in this setting quite a few times. I feel like I talk about Linkit and Start Strong at every meeting that we have. The reason I do so is because of the importance that we see in terms of getting our students to a place where we can move past the, you know, the type of learning that we had during the pandemic. So Dr. Matlos is going to explain a little bit about the background of the Start Strong assessment and talk a little bit about that and share our results across the district. I just want to, you know, we've had some questions. This is not a, not an assessment that gives us comparative data to two other school districts. The purpose of this assessment is for us to know where our students are as individuals and for our ability to, you know, know where those gaps were identified from the, you know, the pandemics going all the way back to, you know, March of, March of 2020. So we feel we got the data that we expected. You know, I've mentioned a few times about my role in our county curriculum consortium. Although we don't have comparative data on a spreadsheet, I do have the, you know, the conversations that I've had with our county peers, and I believe our data is relatively, you know, in line with, you know, the concerns that, you know, that my county colleagues have had. So without further ado, Dr. Matlos will present our results, and you're going to talk about ISR, so I'll stop talking.
All right. Thank you, everybody. How's it going? Merry Christmas. Happy holiday, of course. Here we go, the moment you've been waiting for. Start Strong 2021. All right. Thank you. All right. So here we go. The beauty about today, though, is December the fourteenth, and Mr. Novak just mentioned it before, is actually the ISR reports came out today. So actually, we're delivering to the districts, of course, in the process of dissecting those and getting to the appropriate buildings. So let's talk about this. This came out of nowhere, right? What is it? Why did it happen? Back in, well, when the world ended, I guess, in 2020, the state decided that NJSLA obviously was not going to happen. So, of course, we went through the spring into the summer, and then eventually we needed something, or at least from the point of view of the state, we needed something to determine how did our students at least do in the previous year. And so what they came up with, and again, I'm actually going to just talk about both right now, is in December of 2020, we first had the optional assessment, right? So the optional assessment was any district interested in seeing what a benchmark will look like for their students, feel free to take this. Not mandated in any way, shape, or form, but feel free to take it. Well, less than for took it. We were a handful of districts that took this assessment. And I'm going to say again, we were a handful of districts who took this assessment. The reason why I say that is when we then went into the mandated version of Start Strong, not only were we prepared for this, but we had school districts reaching out to us, kind of saying, what is this thing? You guys did it last year. Can you explain it? So that felt good. It was a good moment for our school district and really taking the lead on Start Strong and what exactly a benchmark does for a district in itself. All right. So basically, when our students took this, this is standards based, again, on the previous academic year. So, yeah, using an example, my daughter, of course, being in fifth grade right now, she took the fourth grade version of the assessment. So all the standards she took was based on the fourth grade, obviously being a current fifth grade student. Okay? At the same time, once she could submit on that assessment, those results were available to teachers immediately. So we didn't have to wait until December fourteenth to see if Johnny or Joni had strong, or strong support was needed, or some support was needed. They immediately had that in the palm of their hands to determine, okay, if they didn't do so on this assessment, why? And I'll talk about later what they also saw in terms of the actual breakdown of the questions that you have. All right. The NJCU also had to satisfy those federal requirements, all right, because we didn't take NJSLA in the spring. This was, again, a way to fulfill, obviously, the federal requirements. And again, keep in mind, the Start Strong is not, and again, not a replacement of NJSLA. There's a chance this might go away next year, all right, that NJSLA may need the link says going forward. But again, we don't know. We won't know that, of course, until July first of the following year. Okay. When you, the teacher, saw your student take the assessment, this is what you have, okay, the preliminary student report, it told you exactly, did they need support in a specific area, whether, again, it was geometry, it was something within writing, okay, reading, or again, or of course, science. Now, our students must go over to the school and across the state of New Jersey for the mandated version of this, which we took back in October. All right. It was, again, grades four through twelve. All right. Our results, district-wide, all right, let's kind of go over this here. The, the orange color, if you want to call that, less support, you then have some support in the middle, and then strong support being, of course, at the bottom, all right? What does all that mean? So if you on Start Strong had strong support, again, just go back to that previous slide, need strong support, those bottom numbers, all right, ELA, math, science, all right, you would essentially, in NJSLA, again, don't want to use it as a precursor, but if you're matching the two assessments up, you're looking at a six fifty to a six ninety-nine in terms of a score. What does that mean? You're essentially, you did not meet the expectation of NJSLA. But because it is a different test in itself, you get into the some support category, twenty-five, thirty-five, forty. Okay, seven hundred to seven forty-nine expands it quite a bit, because now you're in the partially and approaching, depending where you end up, of course, in the middle there, right? That's seven hundred to seven forty-nine on the left with NJSLA. And then, of course, going back, you have, of course, the less support, forty-seven, nineteen, and sixteen in science, in these percentages. And that, again, one more time, less support, seven fifty to eight fifty, you're looking at met expectations or, of course, exceeded them, again, if you're looking at NJSLA, all right? So again, that'd be the difference between the two, essentially combining the different levels to get your sum, sorry, your strong sum and less support. All right. Half glass full. That's why I call this, because if you look at our results in ELA, all right, seventy-two percent were in the less some support, fifty-four percent less some support, and within science, fifty-six percent less some support. I make a big deal of this only because you're coming out of 2020. You're coming out of a virtual atmosphere. You're coming out of a hybrid schedule, and then you're taking an assessment in October, mandated by the state of New Jersey, and our kids showed up, right? Seventy-two percent, fifty-four percent, fifty-six percent. And again, you can argue that some category can lean either way. To me, coming out of all of that, again, our staff was very pleased just district-wide with these results. Breaking this down even more, just so I can go grade by grade here. Grade four, we had a hundred and ninety-one students who took Start Strong in October. All right. Half glass full approach again. Sixty-eight percent in ELA, sixty-two percent in math. Again, breaking down further with the thirty-one needing strong support, twenty-six some, forty-two. And again, same thing with, of course, math, thirty-seven, thirty-one, and thirty-one. But again, for grade four, this was key, because they're taking the grade three standards. Again, not based on grade four, this is based on grade three. Coming out of, of course, the pandemic here, if you want to call it that, results are very, very good for grade four. Grade five, two hundred and thirty-one students, all right, eighty-one percent in the less support, some support, as well as in math, sixty percent with the less support, some support. Grade six, two hundred and thirty-six students, all right. So grade six, a little different, because they also have to include science within this category. So they are taking the fifth grade standards, obviously, in the sixth grade, and taking a look at the breakdown here. Sixty-four percent in ELA, forty-four in math, and fifty-six percent in science. Grade seven, two hundred and fifty-five students taking ELA, and then two hundred and eighteen in math. And again, we know that we start branching off in our different levels in mathematics, especially in grade seven. So you're looking at seventy-eight percent within ELA for the sum and less, and sixty-four percent, of course, math for the sum and less. It's going to be very repetitive, I apologize. In ELA, two hundred and seventy students, and again, with math, a hundred and fifty-six students took it. In grade eight, again, seventy-seven percent, ELA, fifty-six percent. Grade nine, again, grade nine kind of on its own here, but you'll see the math scores after these slides. ELA, two hundred and two students, and two hundred in science, sixty-one percent, some and less, and of course, with science, sixty-one percent, some and less support. All right. Grade ten, two hundred and twenty-one students, all right, sixty-three percent ELA by itself, with the some and less support. And in grade twelve by itself, of course, with science, a hundred and five students took this assessment. And again, with the assessment subs, just to also include, this was approximately about forty-five minutes to take. It took maybe two days the most to complete it. We were provided by a window by the state of New Jersey, which essentially lasted from the first day of school all the way until October twenty-seventh. So we had plenty of time to not only finish the assessment, but of course, have our makeup complete. All right. And in science, quarter-seven percent, some and less support. All right. Then you get into the breakouts with Algebra One, right? Grade seven, around two hundred and seventy-eight students, thirty-three percent, all right, with the sum and less support. Algebra Two, two hundred and eighty students took this, at sixty-six percent, the sum and less support. Geometry, grade eight through ten, two hundred and thirty-seven students, fifty-three percent, some and less support. All right. And again, just to kind of, kind of flow through everything, of course, I will provide now copies of all these assessments to our district website on assessing, of course, our upcoming state assessment. So a lot, a lot of changes, especially going into 2022. In grade eleven, I'm sure everyone is aware now of the state board education, essentially, passed, if you want to call it that, a brand-new assessment just for grade eleven. And our window for this will be March fourteenth to the twenty-fifth. This will be on the same platform. It will be on the Pearson Access platform as we take NJSLA and Start Strong. Of course, this is not a familiar site for our grade eleven students. So this, of course, yes, will be in addition to NJSLA, which this year, the grade will be three through nine. Again, historically, it was three through ten. Again, our window for this will be April twenty-fifth to June third. But we're doing something new, especially with our elementary building. We're going to stagger the assessments from April into May. So what we used to do in the past was essentially, here you go, third graders, you're going to take a test all week long, ELA and math, and that's it, you're finished. So we felt the need that, you know, one, we're going to start you April twenty-fifth with ELA. We're going to give you a break, let our teachers catch up, let them get to even more content within mathematics. And then by May, the week, sorry, May tenth, that would then be the mathematics assessment for NJSLA. And then especially if you are a fifth grader, all right, we have to take science. We're going to give you another week kind of to get ready for science. And then that final week, we're going to do the science assessment. So again, essentially giving that kind of staggered approach so our students have that opportunity really to kind of take it and breathe, breathe a little bit before they take that final assessment. All right. And of course, the parent, there is, there's actually a New Jersey parent portal. Once the parent receives the ISR, that individual student report, there is an actual code on there. They can log into Pearson Access, and all of their state assessments are actually listed on there. So from Park to NJSLA, you can have a historic record in archive, if you want to call it that, of every single assessment your child has taken. All right. It's a very easy login process.
Dr. Matlos.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there, when you log on to that, they have the assessment, do they show a comparison among districts, among students statewide?
Well, they, they essentially just give you a copy of your ISR reports that they have. So you're getting your individual scores and so forth. The only way you're going to really see a comparison with other districts is essentially kind of the, if you want to call it the school report card, where you're getting kind of the, you know, the uniform approach of how are all of our students doing compared to other school reports. Whereas like the SAT, then yes, you do have the College Board does provide, you have to save a lot more information with how your child did with the PSA tape.
Yeah. One of the things we saw, I mean, you saw it, and we got to, we didn't need the Start Strong result to tell us about our concerns in the seventh, eighth, and freshman mathematics. I've been, I've been talking about that in this group and Ed Committee, you know, since last, last November, December. That's where we see, you know, one of those, one of those concerns, and it's consistent across the state and across the county, just the prerequisite skills necessary for that level of mathematics were things that were, you know, one of the things that suffered with students being in so many different, so many different environments. So knowing that, knowing going into this before we even had the result, we do put things in place and new approvals. We have the Algebra One refresher course for our, that's an offering that we had for our current freshmen who passed Algebra One as eighth graders and moved on to geometry. But, you know, the result that we knew was coming knows that they passed. They passed in a pandemic environment. And that there are skills, standards, and gaps that we have to address. We have a course in place with, you know, to do that. We've added encore support. We've bolstered our, you know, basic skills offerings in our, in our elementary schools. One of the things you're going to find in the middle school and the high school coming back from winter break is that we're going to be offering after-school, after-school tutoring, after-school programs, after-school clubs for our ELA and mathematics students coming out of it. That's one of the, that's one of the components of the latest COVID, COVID recovery grant, the Esper Three grant affords us money at the middle school and the high school to offer those things, so we can have our teachers being there to, you know, do tutoring with small groups to try and work on these, work on these skills. We're not only relying on after-school clubs because, or after-school tutoring, because we know that's not going to hit everyone. So we're, we've really started, really started in conversations over the summer with us waiting for the data, taking our benchmark assessments to Linkit, looking at the data. Our staff, this week, we had department meetings. Last week, we had faculty meetings, and we started getting this data, the newer data into our staff's hands so they can start looking at the standards and really making sense of where those big gaps lie. We have two professional development days coming up. One is on January eighteenth, and the other is on February eighteenth, where the majority of that time is being dedicated to our staff working together, identifying standards in need of support, and planning lesson objectives to bring our students forward. So the real power of the data process that we have is we have the, the Linkit Benchmark Assessment A that we took, what was the timeframe? It was early September.
September, last week.
Last week, September. We have Start Strong. Prior to our January eighteenth Professional Development Day, our students will complete Benchmark B in Linkit. And that's the real power of the assessment that we have, is because we'll see what Start Strong said they missed last year. Linkit tells us where they are now compared to their current standards. And then we'll see their growth from our first benchmark assessment early in the year to when we take it, starts January eleventh, correct? Yeah. So January eleventh, we'll take that follow-up assessment. And then when our staff meets on January eighteenth, they'll have that data, they'll see how our students have grown, and they'll be able to target the standards that are still standing out to us that we've identified so far. So, you know, we knew this was coming, as, you know, Dr. Matlos refers to glass half-full. We were, we were prepared for this, just because it was consistent with what we had seen in the classroom and the things that we were looking at through our Linkit benchmarks. So we got a good plan of the fact we're going to go, and we're excited to get moving.
Dan, are, when you're, when you're doing the professional development in January, are they going to meet grade level to see where we're, if the weaknesses, like across the district, and how we're going to be addressing them on the grade level?
So those are some of the things that Dr. Matlos and I, our supervisors, our principals are looking at now, is the district-level standards of weakness. And that's the planning that we're doing now, is how do I identify, you know, best practice lessons, best practice strategies for those big standards. But then we also know that every classroom is different. Every student is different. So, you know, we're looking at the broad, the broadened picture for what standards as a district do we have to target by grade level. At the building and department level, they're working with individual teachers, individual grades to see what their class did. And it's not also, you know, although it's a big picture for the district, it also comes down to that every, almost every environment that our student was in last year was different. You know, when they had to do half of their learning at home, and we know every home is different. We know, so, so the results in one room could be very different than the results in another room. So we are getting to the very specific, you know, down to the student level. And that's where that individual student report comes in and our Linkit Benchmark. So it's a lot of work, you know, roll up our sleeves and maybe go on kind of thing.
And I will conclude by just a couple of things. Again, I mentioned this earlier report. TA, they are released today. The RSV will go home actually with report cards for the one right. Again, that kind of quote I talked about on the NJ portal. And it just gave me an idea of what that's going to look like when you do see it. This is just a sample from the NJDOA of what the reporting on the less some and strong, where your student score kind of falls on the scale. And that kind of quote, of course, being right about the word what do the, that's what you type into the NJ parent portal. All right. Gets you an idea how did you perform with the reporting concepts. Actually, it goes through each, this is just being an ELA report, but it goes through each section of how they did. Gets even better, because if you're an educator, you Gets even better, because if you're an educator, you have this at your fingertips right now, you can go question by question and determine how many of your students got it correct or incorrect. And actually tells you if they got it partially correct or not, what you can work on per standard within, again, that grade level. So this is also a great talking point, you do get that professional development session. Again, take a fourth-grade teacher talking to another fourth-grade teacher, just reply. Here's your conversation, here's your piece, that you can have that, again, that talk.
I have a question about that. This seems like really easy for teachers and parents to understand. Is Lincoln easy for teachers to understand?
Yeah, the, you know, the reports that are given out, especially, I'll give you the example of our recent parent conferences, where teachers had the opportunity to take out a Lincoln report and actually go through, what standards does your child weaken? Where can we improve? And then again, it's also an opportunity which we constantly use within the district, but, you know, this, this could be a report that leads into the opportunity for extra help, an opportunity to have a conversation with the NRS committee as well. So these do help us in the long run, determine what supports a child needs, especially going whether it's from, use UGL as an example, into Mac to the middle school, even from Mac to middle school, of course, into the high school. But overall, I think when it first was established, I think it was very difficult, to be honest, to just see what it was. And then as a parent myself, when I'm getting a report home, I don't just have a reporter in front of me, I now have an opportunity to see, okay, how is my daughter doing, especially in the ELA portion? What is she struggling in, how can I help her as a parent?
The Lincoln, the Lincoln platform caters more to the staff member than it does to the, to the parent. It doesn't have as clean a, doesn't have as clean of a, you know, individual student report in Lincoln as you would get for it. You know, so that's a, that's a, you know, kind of like with the Fuentes and Penel benchmark, that's, that's an educator's tool. So Lincoln is an educator's tool. And Lincoln, you know, right here, it tells you the type of question. In Lincoln, we can see the actual question. We can see the questions that the, that the kids, you know, missed that standard on. You know, so the teachers can have a little, and that's one of the, that's one of the great conversations we had with administrators and staff, is that, you know, and coming back to the last half-full, there's, you know, so Star Strong, based on the previous year's learning, Lincoln is giving us, you know, the current standard view. So our teachers can see that, here's the top ten. You know, so these ten standards were off. But then they can identify and rule out, well, these five are not things that I taught yet. So that's, that's validating for the staff members to know, okay, so there's ten here, five of them were things that I didn't teach yet. I'm going to teach those, and the kids are going to do fine on it next time, but these three I taught, so I got to teach this again. So that's the conversation that we're, that we're having. That's what we're pointing out with our staff, with our administrators, that up until, we're doing that now, so that January eighteenth, they can work. So that they are going to identify for themselves, what are the three, you know, three or four biggest standards that I already taught, that I need to work harder on or do something different. So, you know, I don't want to say, I'm wrong, that was the wrong words, but.
No, 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 I don't hear you mean that.
But I have to circle back.
Yeah, and that's why I ask, because I find the Lincoln to be very difficult to understand as a parent. And I'm an educator, and I find it difficult to understand the parent report. So I was wondering if it's easier on the teacher's side, so thank you for explaining that.
And Lincoln is working on that, we say that to them every time. They, they take feedback and they change a little bit, but, you know, like you said, they're still, it's more of an educator tool than a, than a parent report.
I appreciate that it's an educator tool, thank you for explaining that. But does it get, or get to see the Lincoln report?
Yeah, we do that at conferences.
Have they seen them this year, or are they not until the, because we talked about it before some conferences started?
Yeah, yeah, our, our November conferences, our Lincoln Benchmark was available prior to. So our, because we have Tri-ester now, our elementary report cards are not ready until next week. But the Lincoln assessment was available at our conferences. This, Star Strong, we received the parent, the individual student reports, the ISRs today, and they're going in the mail.
Okay. I have a few more questions, sorry. So the Lincoln report that parents can see is what grades?
It's two through eleven. You know, twelve graders take ELA, and it's available for Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II.
Okay, and thank you. Are the assessments similar? I mean, I would imagine that they're testing the standards, and they're both standard speak, so they have to be similar, right? So it's just more practice?
Right, similar, similar type of questions, similar standards being, being covered.
And all testing is on the computer, there's no written?
There is, there is written, if necessary.
Okay, right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, good morning.
Merry Christmas. Thank you, sweetheart.
Thank you.
Mark, I don't know if there were any more questions regarding the presentation. Thank you, Dan. Barbara, we have the board minutes from November sixteenth, and from the special meeting on December first for the strategic planning.
I'll make a motion to approve the November sixteenth report. Special meeting in November sixteenth, executive session, this is the center for special meeting.
I'll second it. All those in favor? Any votes?
I'm staying for December first. I'm staying for December first.
President's report. I just wanted to say thank you to the community for coming out for the strategic planning. I think that the last, you know, the last night, there was a lot of good conversation. Each night, each meeting went very well, but I, I want to say thank you, because we had a consistent group that came out, and I think a lot of what came out of that, we, we knew some of it already, but I think we're looking ahead, and we probably will have more discussion on that come January. I saw Kathy last night, and she said she was getting all of our stuff together, and I said probably January is. I just wanted to talk about that. Public comment. This portion of the meeting is open to members of the public for the purpose of addressing resolutions on this agenda only. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of thirty minutes, and then time permitting, other public comment limited to five-minute procedure will be allowed until the thirty-minute time period transpires. All members of the public speaking during this public comment period are asked to address topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to sign the register provided and use their full name, spell their last name, group affiliation appropriate, and provide your address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged, and the board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for the comments. Anyone wishing to speak on the public comment? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
All right, before we accept the agenda, just going to make two edits. Page number ten, personnel student affair, resolution number thirty. This is substitute teachers, we have two names registered at the week, calling the agenda, one is Alan Madzick, and the second is Damian Inella. So when it's on paperwork, we hopefully, I respect the next.
And we have hand carry motion. Number two, under personnel. And we have a hand carry number one under education. Need a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
We go to the gate, make all the motions.
You're not working last day.
You're earning your money next. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any others?
Education, Mrs. Dwyer. Okay, I'd like to move items one through eight for approval.
Second. Any discussions? I think we moved one through eight. The number ten.
I'll just say, it's really nice to see field trips back on overnight field trips, so that just goes as far as you.
Any other discussions?
Guessing they have insurance, right? Because there were some problems with those field trips back in twenty-twenty.
We did have a conversation yesterday about this. Alan's, we did talk for a moment.
So we did speak to Madzick about that, or field trips actually, about that. So there is some deposit money down up front, it's, we've had to put in the minimum possible just in case. We're certainly hopeful that it never comes to another mark of twenty-twenty, but on the other hand, it just never goes. So we're putting that as little upfront as we possibly can, and hoping for the best. But we're excited about, as Kate says, for the kids, they, a lot of kids missed a lot of good trips this last year and a half, and we're happy to get back on track with Philadelphia, Washington DC, some of our user trips, we're back on board. I think we approved the fan trip to Florida last month, maybe, so we're, we're back.
That new, that trip for, in the Philadelphia trip is a new trip for them that we've never done, so that's exciting. First for the seventh grader.
Can I ask when the parents will be notified, tons of trips, and that they can start preparing, you know, funds and whatnot?
If we get it approved tonight, we can start ASAT.
Great to hear.
I'm sure they were waiting for that.
Yeah, it hasn't been approved yet, once we get it approved tonight, we'll do it.
Great. Any other discussions? Roll call, Mark? Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Garino?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mr. Doshinsky?
Yeah.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Okay, move to approve item number ten in the hand carry. Second. Any discussions?
I, I just want to state that I think this is a wonderful round for their kids, and I'm looking forward to, I'm hoping that maybe we could get a, maybe we can get a chance to see some of their, their playing time and that, and that, because this, this is a great thing. And it sounds to me like the, the students in the high school are very excited about this program, so.
Yeah, I think we, we can definitely share that out. I think once, if everything goes through tonight, they get it approved, and they plan to have a schedule, but we got to watch one unified basketball game when they first started, and it was pretty, I mean, insane. So I'll definitely share the schedule down with the board.
Yes, that would be great.
Any other discussions? It's not roll call? Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Garino?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mr. Doshinsky?
Yeah.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
And resolution number nine will be voted on after a second. Thank you. Personnel student affairs, Mrs. Stevenson?
I'd like to make a motion to move items one through thirty-seven on the agenda, as well as thirty-eight through forty-four on the hand carry.
Oh, forty-five.
Oh, thank you, forty-five, thank you, Debbie.
Second.
It should be accepted, though, thirty-eight through forty-five.
I usually do them together, but he'd like them to be separate, and I do it separately.
What's the board's request, right?
I, I'd like to make a motion to talk about the hand carry.
If they didn't decide if they want me to do it all separately.
Oh. So it didn't happen? Doesn't happen, right?
That's usually how I do it, I usually don't all look together.
Go ahead, so.
We got it moved now. Oh, we need a second, I'm sorry.
A second.
Okay.
Now can I make a motion to talk about hand carry, number two, in the executive session?
The, the entire hand carry?
Yes, the entire hand carry.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, now wait, now, I think we're going to look, then maybe we should leave it as a separate.
No.
Can we do a break in the bar?
Can I just, can you just make a motion to table thirty?
Oh, thank you.
Thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, fifty-four, forty-five, and then we can name them.
Okay, sounds good. And you need a second for that motion? I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Jason?
I would like to table number nineteen.
Number nineteen. For discussion? After executive session, sir?
After executive session.
Okay. So I need a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so now, we're voting on, we didn't have the session yet, but one through thirty-seven?
Minus nineteen. Minus fifteen.
Minus nineteen. And then we're going to come back out and after executive session, to vote on the hand carries. Any discussion on the motions that were on the table? Great.
So I, the number of resignations, with retirements, and people leaving the district, I'm just wondering, have we ever done exit interviews with people that are left the district? Has that happened in the past, or some, maybe some of them are longer?
Nothing formal, we don't have anything formal set up, we certainly could. We've got people, just, just to, we've got, we've got some, some good setup.
And if we, if we did it in the past, who is it that would sit in on those?
We have, it would typically be, I could do it, the principal would do it.
We've never done it.
Yeah.
We've never done it?
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if, again, right, most, I think many companies do exit interviews with employees, right? They are employees of the district. And I'm wondering if, you know, some of those employees that leave, if they were able to just kind of talk about their experience here, it would help us figure out things that we're doing well.
I could look at it, I thought it'd create something.
I think that's, I think that's a very good idea, because I think a number of us on the board have a concern about the number of teachers that we're losing. Special ed, now I see we're losing a science teacher. There's got to be something that's not right, and we have to find out what it is, and we have to fix it. And that might be what we're looking at.
And I do, I think it's a balance. There's probably good things that we're doing, where are those?
Debbie?
I, in my own career, so I've never had an exit interview. And except for the job that I'm losing at the end of this month. And I didn't realize, honestly, how important it is to really bring your experience, and the good, the bad, to your administrator, to your supervisor. And I agree, I'm really concerned with what's going on here, and I'm, I'm rather surprised, though, I go through the years, I've been on the board, I know a few ladies on the board, and everybody else, this is all rather new. We haven't even thought of that. And I really think it's, it's seriously time to do that, so we can really fix things up where it needs to be.
I feel like an exit interview, an exit interview is a good kind of self-evaluation for yourself. And, and sometimes there's things that you're not going to know as an administrator, you probably will never know, if somebody doesn't have that, take that time. So I, I think that's a great idea. Maybe we can discuss it a little further in, with that poll under like personnel, do you think? I mean, in our personnel committee?
It seems like it's still under personnel.
But I think, I think that's a good, because I think there are some issues in education today as a whole, and maybe there's some ways that we can help address it, so that we can maybe lure some more people into our district. So, yeah, I think that's a great idea. So, yeah, I think that's a great idea.
I just, uh, I like this, you know, caution alarmist, um, sort of reactions. I mean, you can't read a headline from CNBC page without hearing about the great resignation. Uh, I think that's a, you know, something sweeping the nation unfortunately. Everywhere you, everywhere you look regardless of the industry, the great resignation is, is a real thing. You know, you pull up the CNBC homepage and, you know, that's, that's what you look at. So, you know, I just want to caution the, the alarmist, um, sort of response.
Great. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I have two things. The first is, um, as a educator who has worked in four different districts, exit interviews, I think, are a great idea. And I think that the leaving employee should have clue to be with the principal, their supervisor, the superintendent. Um, I, I remember, heck no, I don't wanna know. So that they can share with the person that doesn't know, you know? Um, that's the first thing. The second thing is, um, education's changed. I've been at my career for twenty-two years and in twenty-two years, when I first started, people did not leave their first job. Today, these new young educators leave, they've been taught to find what's best. So to think back to what it was in the eighties, the nineties, and even the early two thousands is very unfair to look for problems. This is what they do. And it's, it's a new thing, you know? So I wanted to throw that out there and just say that, you know, uh, sometimes for an educator to move on to another district, it is a great thing for them. Sometimes it's others, sometimes it's education, sometimes it's, you know, whatever it is, closer to home seems to be a big one. Um, but I just, I just wanted to say that, like, I think that's really changed in my own career. I've seen that, you know, and, and maybe it's an age group thing, but it's definitely different than what it was when I started.
Debbie, do you have something else?
Yeah. So the, the great resignation thing, I, again, I think there's some, we can find some benefits.
Sure.
Out of that, right? Because I think there are people here that, um, did love what they do and, right? Because of things that have happened, right? They're just making that change and they can, they can bring that to us. I, I also think that there's an opportunity for us, right, to learn from the folks that Kay's talking about. The ones coming in and also maybe the ones that are leaving for a different opportunity, right? That, that happens every day. Didn't happen as much, right, in education, but now it's happening more, but it happens every day. I think in many jobs, whether it's technical jobs, whether it's, you know, business jobs, people, people switch companies probably more frequently there than they do in education. Uh, they're doing it more in education. We, we could probably get some good snippets as to, maybe there are things that we can do better to keep somebody the next time. Maybe there are things that people are coming to us for that they really like that we need to help, right? And put out there to other people, so.
Any other discussion? I, I just want to thank Joyce Prost for her many years of serving our district. She will be greatly missed and I, I hope she enjoys her retirement. She truly is one of the very proud, very proud and loved by her mother. No other discussion? Time for Ropa? Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Grino?
Yes.
Mr. Chopchinsky?
Yeah.
Mrs. Romeo?
A C on thirty-two, yes, very good.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
And we will come to that after executive session. And we are on to Operations of Finance. Mr. Chopchinsky?
I'd like to move items, um, number one to the bottom under Operations of Finance.
Second. Any discussion? It's not Ropa, is it? Mr. Chopchinsky?
Yeah.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Grino?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
I would like to move item number seven under Operations of Finance.
Second. Any discussion? Ropa? Mr. Chopchinsky?
Yeah.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Grino?
Fifteen.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Okay.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Up game.
Move items seven through ten under Operations of Finance.
Second. Any discussion? I, I, I have a question. Um, on number seven, um, before I ask the question, Dr. Anamon, do you explain what Title Four is? What's Title Four? Because there's, there's a bill for like over thirty-seven hundred dollars for tomato pizza and it's being paid for by Title Four.
So Title, Title Four is the same account, the same title, federal fund that I use to fund Digital Citizenship Night?
Okay.
Safe Night. And there is money stipulated with Title Four for food in particular to bring family back.
Okay, I, because I was under the impression that it was not a kind of financial aid.
No, that was, no, that was for Hometown Pride Night.
Okay.
So for every family, every pre-registered family, um, who attended that night got a little gift bag, goodie bag. And, you know, so because we couldn't host the family dinner like we wanted to because of COVID, we were able to at least send a family home with a gift certificate, um, to Mac of Pizza so they could have, so they could have the family dinner. Because that's, that's really what we were, you know, the Hometown Pride with everything we've done with Digital Citizenship Night, bracing the family dinner table.
I just wanted to make sure we worked on everything. I'm happy.
It was awesome.
That would never happen.
Well, I was concerned about the Title Four funds that we used.
So the Title Funds are earmarked for something different. Uh, Title One has a part of the package.
I wasn't clear on four, okay, thank you.
Did you save that for the exit interview next time?
That was, that was a, that was a big piece that expects that.
No, and actually, if I could give a shout out to Mac of Pizza, so, so Mac of Pizza worked with us. So, so Title Four funds only pay fifteen dollars for each twenty-dollar certificate. So she gave us twenty, she gave every family a twenty-dollar certificate, although they only received compensation for fifteen.
Please.
So I didn't get a chance because I didn't, I wasn't able to speak, um, you know, out at that, at that event. So thank you for giving me that opportunity because I didn't get a chance to mention that publicly.
How many bags were there?
We, we had enough, we, we, uh, we gave out two, I think we gave out two-hundred-and-twenty bags. So two-hundred-and-twenty bags wasn't per kid, that was per family. So many families brought multiple kids. So I think our count was right around close to a hundred, about five-hundred people, which is typical to our family nights. We usually draw between four and five-hundred people for, for those events. So it was, it was, it was a great night.
Mac of Pizza is a very good supporter of our, yes, so you have to be very thankful for the.
We're giving a shout out to them, the live stream is out so they can.
Yes, yes. It's a live stream is out.
We're working on it.
Hello, did it still end up on mic? Thanks, Lorraine, seven fifty-three.
Oh, okay.
Is it the last year now?
Sing a song, Dave.
Okay, let's go, let's go back, let's go back to that show. We'd like to give a, a shout out to Mac of Pizza for sponsoring our, our, uh, Westover Pride Night, right? As a fan. So there are a lot of good places in town that sponsor the schools and we want to thank each one of them for supporting us.
Was that our first official board event commercial break? I believe it was.
So back to it, back to the item on the, for vote, the Operations of Finance, item seven through ten. Any other discussion under that? Ropa, Ropa? Mr. Chopchinsky?
Yeah.
Mr. Grino?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Policy. Mrs. Romeo.
I'd like to make a motion to move one through six under Policies.
Okay. Any discussion? Did not, uh, Ropa? Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
I want to answer this, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Thank you.
Listen.
Oh, thank you.
I'll do it again.
Okay, yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Chopchinsky?
Yeah.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mr. Grino?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Committee report. Part three, nation. No report? Safety, we don't, we don't have a kind of meeting? We, you know, I was, that's not the last one, but we don't have anything coming up yet. Uh, Superintendent Randhale?
Okay, um, there were several items that were discussed. One was the grade portal, um, and, and they asked that teachers be reminded to answer their grades in a timely manner. And Dr. Anamon, uh, said that he would speak with the administrators in the buildings and that the current district enters within two weeks. There was a question on elementary grading scale and, um, Dr. Anamon explained that they, they approached these grades in accordance with the state standards. Um, there's a question about post-pandemic planning. Um, I think you had, I think Dr. Anamon and Mr. Novak were gonna discuss this with building administrators. Um, Dr. Anamon and Mr. Novak will bring this up with building administrators and see if they're noticing any changes. Okay, and they asked about post-pandemic policies. Um, Dr. Anamon is gonna reach out to the principals and find out, um, exactly what policy should be in place. And then, I have more. Um, there was a question about the open house for bus drivers and it looked like it went pretty well. Um, students leaving the district, has it been pinpointed what was filtered is lacking that is causing students to leave to go to private school or out of district? Areas that we should be focusing on? And then they asked for an anonymous survey to be sent to families to gauge what would cause their children to attend the high school out of district. Um, and this, they felt it would be needed to be sent to families with grades, um, in four and five. Um, Dr. Anamon explained that the reasons seem to be all over the map. Athletic programs not offered at the high school. Uh, social thing, middle school guidance counselors. Speak with families applying out of district for high school and families are asked to give feedback as to why their students will attend high school out of district. There was a question about, uh, virtual learning during quarantine. And, uh, Dr. McQuaid spoke about the process of our nurses taking, talking through symptoms on a case-by-case system, uh, basis. And again, the students can return after ten days quarantine. Okay, and then.
Which recently changed to fourteen, just because people are.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, but that was in the morning.
I, I know, I know, I just want to make sure in case somebody hears.
Because Orange is, we are now Orange.
We are still, yeah.
Everybody, the whole state.
The whole state.
Is there a wait time after being sent home to be able to log into virtual learning? Do parents need to follow up with guidance for the principal in order to get the link for the Google Meet? Liz, did you explain that?
Sure, so, so the system that we have in place is the nurses then are obviously notifying the administration. The administration make sure that the teachers are then notified that a student is gonna be virtual. Middle school and high school, it seems to be more seamless because the, the teacher can just strain in the child, right, throughout the periods, Google Classroom. At the elementary or the middle school, it could take up to one day or twenty-four hours to get that going. Because let's say something comes in on a Sunday night late and the principal and the staff, they don't see it. The child may not log in on Monday, it might be Tuesday, but it's not counted against the child. They're still coded as virtual. But it, it does take one day to get, get things set up at the elementary level. And Dan can speak to this more, but the elementary teachers have a lot more planning and preparation and individualized instruction that needs to happen. So they need that extra day to plan for that child, both asynchronous and synchronous, you know, learning opportunities, so.
Thank you.
It was the one day.
Okay, question, there was a question about public relations. Um, was there any update on a pamphlet to hand out to realtors? Um, and Dr. Anamon explained that it's not gonna be a, a hard copy. It's gonna be a link with a QR code, um, and it'll, it'll highlight all the good bits in the district. Um, any, any updates on the website? And as of now, there are none. Okay, um, there were questions about Chromebook and Dr. Anamon and Mr. Novak, um, have a plan to put in place. And there were questions about ner-, school nurses. Um, I believe the position at Upper Greenwood Lake has now been filled or not yet?
That person at that time did not accept the position, so.
Okay, okay. And then, and there was a question about, uh, teaching typing. And, um, Doctor, and, and Mr. Novak explained that they're gonna talk about, talk about that at professional development in January and February. And now I'm done, thank you.
The State County School Board. We, uh.
Well, let, let, you wanna let Debbie?
Okay. Will you do the other chair, Carrie?
She came with me last night.
Oh, I see, okay, I saw you do it last night. Um, so the, um, the State County School Board Association meeting was launched tonight. On topic of discussion was communication between, um, between all parties, between, uh, board members, board members to each other, board members to administration, board education to the public, um, and within, and, and to the families and students and staff. So it was a very, um, I think highly educational. I think there was certain things that were recommended or suggested that I think we should really look into. And I know we were sent, um, the PowerPoint.
PowerPoint.
And, and, uh, I thought, I, um, I, I really thought that was, that's something we really need to, you know, to, to pick up some good stuff from there.
Yeah, the, um, the gentleman who did the presentation, his name was, I think, Paul Geller?
Yes.
Geller, okay. He is Director of Technology and Communication at Pasca Regional District. And he oversees two-hundred classrooms. And, um, he pointed out, and, and I really like this idea, pointed out that all the schools, not every school has a separate, um, link, okay? They're all on this one webpage and he oversees it. And if a, a principal has to put, um, a newsletter on, it goes on the district webpage. If, um, there's pictures of kids, they put them on. It's a whole thing, he kind of stressed without saying it, the importance of branding. And that's something that we, as a district, have to look into. We don't do enough with our website. It's, it's lacking at best. And I think that we need to really, really start looking into branding and, and brand about ourselves. So, that's all I have.
Hold that thought, Mrs. Dwyer, hold that thought. I'll talk about it later.
Okay. Yes, we're coming up to you. Um, New Jersey School Board, again, we finished up with our, um, strategic planning and we should be looking at, um, well, we talked about it in January. And just thank you again to everyone that participated. Legislative?
Absolutely.
Technology oversight, okay, right, so.
Thank you for that. We have a little, a little bit in between, right, but a really good segue. Uh, so as everybody knows, and we've talked about a couple times, the, the big thing that we are working on is, uh, the overhaul of our website. Uh, there is a committee that's met, they've met three times, uh, and we want to overhaul it from the ground up. So we want to look at content, the architecture, the navigational structure, the aesthetics of how things look. They brought in, uh, so, so this committee had websites from all, we actually looked at school districts all over the country, right? And, um, you know, local, close to home, um, they looked at some school districts. Tenafly actually has a very nice website, set up very well. Uh, you know, we thought, hey, they're probably doing this all on their own, not, they're not. They're using Blackboard, which is a pretty standard, um, you know, web builder that, uh, most school districts or a lot of school districts use. So we easily can do that. It was interesting to see that they did have somebody that was in charge of communications and, right, their, their web and their portal and all of those things. So there, there was a centralized job for that specifically, um, in Tenafly. So we're trying to look and see what parents, students, district, staff, and then the general public, right? To your branding point, right, we need to brand, we're local, right? So what are the parents and what are the students? So what are the parents and what are the students and what are the staff looking for? But we also need to make sure that we are branding so the general public outside of West Milford sees who we are and look at us as, you know, a choice town that they want to move to. So, um, that's all being considered. But the next step is to probably go from that group of some administrations, some teachers, to branching out and maybe having just a couple people, a couple other people added into the group so we can kind of further explore what we're doing. So, um, the, you know, Robert and the team, they're reviewing all the information currently on our site. And there is, there's a lot of old information that really, right, we can just kind of wipe down. And, and at the end of the day, we are, we're likely going to just build from the ground up. So we're going to figure out what kind of information we should carry over. But it's not something where we're going to take everything and just plop it into, you know, a new fun-looking, fancy-looking website. It's going to start all new. So that, I, I'd like to hear that from Dan, from Alex and Robert, because we do really need to do that. Again, on the flip side, we don't necessarily need to reinvent the wheel. There, there are companies out there that will provide us templates that will help us do it very well, right? Tenafly is doing it very well, um, with those templates. But it does take a lot to keep up a website. And there's quite a bit that has to be done. Remember, we have 3,200-plus students, we have six elementary schools, right? They all have to kind of maintain that on their own. I don't know that we would be able to have a singular person handle the website and communications for us. We just, we, we just don't have the dollars that maybe a, a town like Tenafly has. So those are all good things that, that are coming. Um, and I think that, uh, you know, remember, it's a work in progress. We kind of put that goal out there to have this in place at the start of next school year. So we've got some way, we've got a ways to go before we get there. And we want to, like, that's purposeful, right? We don't want to just turn things over quickly. So I think that that's good that we're looking at it in, in that way. They did talk about desktops, um, in the schools. So we do have some desktop PCs in the schools. Some of them are pretty old and they, they've reached kind of like their end of life and, you know, we're really due to, um, maybe pull some out of service or redeploy other ones that, you know, maybe aren't being used in the schools that we're based there in now. We'll see. They're going to run some, uh, they're looking at, uh, running some additional fiber. So some of that has to do with, um, our phone system, right? So we want to, we're going to get a new phone system in the schools.
How long have we been talking about the phone system?
16 years?
I think that eight.
Eight, okay. We've cut that in half, so eight years we've been talking about getting a new phone system. All right, there are things we have to do to prepare to, to bring that new phone system in. Um, the, the phone system replacement, they're, they're looking, there's a, there is a phone committee. Robert's got spreadsheets that kind of show where phones will go, how those things will work. So more on that for second week in January, that stuff will start to get a little more on that.
I, I have a question about that because I thought this year was going to be the year that we worked on the infrastructure. Is that what we're doing?
That's, that's what the fiber is.
And before you do infrastructure, though, you have to know where you're going to be putting everything. So, um, and the more information that, um, Robert accumulates, the more we're able to, um, break it down so that we know what direction we need to go in. We had that conversation this morning, uh, in the budget meeting, and, um, there are, there are other options because of the technology continually to evolve. So we're getting closer, but I think that between this year, we have money set aside, and next year's the 22, 23 budget, I think, and next year you're going to have a new phone system.
Good, good. You have a minute.
That's great. That's it, thank you. Uh, the county Board of Education Committee, we, we have no meetings set at this time. Um, West Milford Municipal Alliance?
There wasn't a meeting, um, last night.
Whoever knows, go ahead.
They are looking for Passaic County, um, Mental Health Board members. Um, they asked if we could share the flyers with everyone, print some flyers, I can email it to board members, but if there's anyone else. Um, the purpose of the Passaic County Division of Mental Health Board, um, is to provide input on specific mental health needs in the county, promote conversation and engagement for mental health education, prevention strategies, interventions, and ongoing treatment services. Services as support to those with mental illness and identify gaps and foster development of mental health services. Um, in order to join the board, members must be a legal resident or have work, or have work in Passaic County. Um, and there was a point about the Passaic County Board of Commissioners serve a three-year term. Uh, so that flyer, uh, they're, you know, asking if you know anyone, to please pass along the information. Other than that, if they're in a new grant cycle, um, discussion of the programs for schools, um, the same ones, the fifth, um, sixth grade is, we're not buying yet, fifth grade is Heroes and Cool Kids. And I missed you one way this time.
Lead.
Oh, lead is fifth grade, sixth is, we're not buying yet. And this is Heroes and Cool Kids, yeah. Uh, that's it.
Thank you. Old business. Uh, is there any old business?
Okay. Um, okay, I have a few things. First is, well, hometown Pride Night, we did talk about it, it was absolutely amazing. Uh, so much fun, just, I, I can't talk enough about every single room you went in, it was exciting, the parents had a good time, the kids had such a good time. Um, just really, kudos to everyone involved, it was amazing, thank you. Um, I wanted to, old business, kind of understand, I know things are always changing, the quarantining and COVID. Uh, Liz, maybe you could, like, clear some things for me? Just, um, if, let's say a family has multiple children in their family.
Hold on.
And one child tests positive, but the other children are vaccinated. They don't have symptoms, they still go to school.
Vaccinated, so the close contact is vaccinated, correct?
Yes, the siblings are vaccinated.
So if the close contact is vaccinated and they are not showing any signs of COVID, they can return back to school?
If a parent requests, if some of their children are positive and the other kids are vaccinated and they don't, would we help, would we allow siblings to go virtual even if they're not, like, with symptoms or-
Some families are then getting other children in the household that are vaccinated, let's say tested for a PCR test.
Okay.
They, while they're awaiting results, they may be quarantined even though they're not showing symptoms. So it's kind of on a household basis, but then those conversations happen with the school nurse, and then the school nurse walks them through that and kind of analyzes, like, what's happening in the situation of the, of the parents, and then they talk through that. But they don't force anyone to necessarily come to school, especially because right now, as you know, even those individuals that are vaccinated are also showing up as positive. So we, you know, if you rewind maybe to the, end of the summer, those families would have, you know, sent their child right away or maybe even gotten the, gotten the children tested at a later time. But now I notice that the families are a little more conservative in wanting to make sure that the vaccinated students are still cleared to come back safely.
So I heard you say two things. So they should email the nurse and go through the nurse to ask all these questions, parents and families should ask the nurse these questions.
So usually those questions are handled through the nurse directly?
Okay.
Not even always through email? Even if somebody, if somebody emails the nurse, the nurse, like, makes a phone call back?
Okay. And then, I think I heard you say we're not forcing those, like, siblings maybe that are, that don't have the symptoms or vaccinated to necessarily be in the building. We may allow them to be virtual if there's multiple people in their family that have it and we, if the parents are being conservative.
Right, right now, because we're in the high zone, it's not as black and white as when you're in a more low-risk activity level. But because the past, you know, since Friday, we've been implementing the new practices, that's why there's definitely even an increase in conversations and there's more kids that are excluded right now just because of the, the nature of the whole state.
I'm glad Kate brought it up because it is a confusing time and I think families are concerned too because the holidays are coming up, nobody, you know, we want to have somewhat normal holidays. So I think it's a question that if people are tuning in, it's helpful to clear the air from you as the person who's in charge of that. Thank you.
Anything else on your old business?
Oh, she is one.
Oh, she does, I'm sorry.
You can say a few.
Yeah, I know.
I, I guess that's it, thank you, sorry.
I have something. Um, you mentioned the calendar that we're going to amend the 2022 and 21, 25, next year's calendar.
22, 25.
22, 23. Are we also looking at some of the other holidays that maybe are not on the calendar? Are we going to be-
So the only, the only change is maybe with the NJEA convention, the original date to the third, fourth of November, it's actually going to be the 10th in a row.
Is there a way that we can look at adding some more holidays, specifically Rosh Hashanah to the calendar?
So we, we brought that to committee a few months ago and the decision was made not just to make this particular change. Process of days, the board wishes to do that, we certainly could. But as soon as I thought, I don't want to make too many changes.
Yeah, too many amendments, sure. That's why I'm bringing it up because you mentioned making one amendment, I thought it may be a good time for discussion.
November is always a difficult month when they're looking at the calendar because we have so many days up in November. So, um, as, honestly, in hearing the change, I was kind of happy because now we have Veterans Day off too, so the 10th and the 11th, the 11th is Veterans Day, so it's like two holidays in a row. I guess we could bring it back to committee and discuss it if you'd like. It's up to the board if you want that committee to go. Anybody want to take it back to?
I think, I think that our, we said that Rosh Hashanah off, I think we should discuss it.
Does anybody else on the board feel as though, should we discuss having Rosh Hashanah off for our Jewish families?
I think, I think we had to discuss him once, well, as far as for myself, I don't know if I've got anybody else, I feel like this is already put it out there.
And if it doesn't get changed on the calendar, it is an excuse absence or it's not?
Oh, yeah, that's an excuse.
And I know the one year it was like a first day. So, you know, this year Rosh Hashanah is a first day school. I don't think it's like that on the calendar again.
It's September 25th.
And so maybe that's what we can really be cautious of in the future, is that students, especially in our high level, high-level classes, want to show up on the first day, get their syllabus, get their, you know, um, and I know that that was an issue for a few families, that their children did not want to miss the first day of school. And yet it was a religious holiday for their families. So that puts some people in our community in a conundrum of, do you follow your holiday, you know, your family tradition and your cultural religious holidays, which we would want them to do that? And yet, do you miss your first day of school? So I think we need to be conscious of that, maybe moving forward, so.
Is there a way that we can bring it up in committee where we can look at what the first day of school is and if there are any holidays that fall on that day? Whether it's Diwali or Rosh Hashanah or any of it?
I don't have a calendar in front of me, but I can certainly check.
That's something I think we need to check on as a board, to be cautious and understanding of our community. There's new people coming in, this town is growing, new houses are going up all over. I think we need to be aware when our first day is and what holidays fall on that day. That, I would like to.
Why don't you look at the calendar, maybe send us an email? Thank you. That'd be good. Any other old business? If not, I need a motion.
Second.
All those in favor? New business? Dr. Anamon?
We have a plaque here. Um, before I read this resolution, Dave, I would just like to say, on behalf of the board and really the entire West Milford school community, I would like to thank you for your service. Um, you're the consummate professional, you do everything that's asked of the board. Uh, in sports, they would call you a glue guy, because you do a little bit of everything, you hold the team together. And you're going to be missed. So on behalf of our students, our staff, our parents and my, our colleagues, and your colleagues here on the board, um, I would like to say thank you for your three years of service, um, and best wish, best luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you, Al, sir, appreciate that. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Anamon.
So our resolution here, I'll read it and I'll give you a plaque. Whereas Mr. David Oshinsky has served as a prominent member of the West Milford Board of Education from January 2019 until 2000, December 2021. And whereas Mr. Oshinsky has diligently served on and chaired the negotiations and operations and finance committees, served on the education and policy committees, and was a liaison for the legislative committee. And whereas Mr. Oshinsky held uppermost the welfare of our students in his decisions and served with great skill and dedication. And whereas his servant on the board has brought him the respect of his colleagues on the board, the administrative staff, and the teaching and support staff. Now therefore be resolved as the Board of Education, on behalf of the grateful community, publicly acknowledges and expresses its sincerest appreciation to Mr. Oshinsky for his outstanding contributions to the West Milford County Public School District. And be a further result that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the workshop regular reading of the Board of Education of December 14th, 2021 and presented to Mr. David Oshinsky.
I need a motion, ten seconds.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can you hand his calendar over here?
Dave, did you like to say anything?
Well, it was a quick three years. Uh, during that time, there were some accomplishments within the district, we moved the fifth graders, some accents, the EISA program was put in place, and more than anything else, dealing with the challenges of COVID-19. I think with that one, we needed the wisdom of Solomon and a hyperonocerous. So I think, I wish we could have done more about the state funding formula. We have stored it down on that, then COVID knocked that one out. My professional career over the past 40 years, I've worked with and served on many boards. It's my role as administrator of nonprofit health and human service organization. This is all I'm serving on boards of nonprofits that I have volunteered on. Uh, from this experience, I can really state unequivocally that I have seldom seen a level of dedication and professionalism from both the board, administrative staff, and the teaching staff that I've seen, uh, during this term. I really, uh, really been a pleasure working with everyone. Great. It's been a rewarding experience and I'm thankful that I've had the opportunity to say, thank you.
Thank you again, Dave. It's been a pleasure, we really have a-
Sorry.
Any, and, anybody have anything else on their new business point? Okay, if not, I need a motion to close the business. I move to close the business. We're going, we're going to let Dave. All second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay. Public comment. This portion of the meeting is open to members of the public having a legitimate interest in the action of the board to the purpose of addressing any subject matter pertinent to and directly related to the operations of the West Milford Public School District. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of thirty minutes. And then time permitting, other public comments limited to five minutes per speaker will be allowed until the time expires. All speakers are asked to sign the registers provided and give their full names, spell their last name, whose affiliation is appropriate, and provide their address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and respectful- The Board asks that members of the public be courteous and respectful of their rights, of the rights of the individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the Board are discouraged and the Board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights ordered to then follow the laws of the jury. If the Board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in the way of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Anyone wishing to speak on their public comments? If not...
Saying not, I make a motion to close the public comments.
Second. All those in favor? Okay, we need a motion for executive session? At 8:31, I move to move to executive session for the purposes of discussing personnel appointments, resignation, current litigation matters, special education matters, negotiations, HIBs, and matters of attorney-client privilege. The executive session minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege or confidentiality is no longer available. Thirty minutes? Except for thirty minutes, we should back down thirty minutes. Davey, second? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm standing opposed.
The pepper.
Now you can use pepper and then Dr. Anne Carey, what do you do?
I will put it together.
Okay? I'd like to pull the meeting back to order. Uh, Barbara, can you give the roll call, please? Mrs. Romeo?
Here.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Stillman?
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Here.
Ms. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Greino?
Here.
Ms. Oshinsky?
Here.
Mr. Conklin?
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Here.
Uh, Mrs. Stevenson?
I'll take it from here.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to move number 19 on the agenda under personnel.
Need a second?
All second.
Any discussion? And now, local? Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
No.
Mr. Greino?
I'm staying.
Ms. O'Brien?
No.
Mr. Oshinsky?
No.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
No.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
No.
Motion failed. Uh, Mrs. Stevenson?
I'd like to make a motion to move Hand Carey number two, items number 38 through 45, under personnel.
All second.
Any discussion? If not, robo? Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Greino?
Yes.
Ms. Oshinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer? Okay, I'd like to move to approve, uh, the recommendation of superintendent in the following resolutions, um, incident three for 2022 and three as substantiated, 2022 and five is unsubstantiated, 2000...